Okay. The council will come to order. All rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our veterans, service members, and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. We will now have our land acknowledgement. We honor and acknowledge the Massachusetts, Pennacook, and Pawtucket peoples whose ancestral lands we now call home and on which we gather today. We express gratitude to the indigenous peoples who have cared for this land for generations, predating European colonization and continuing to the present. Moving forward, we are committed to ensuring that the histories, voices, and contributions of indigenous peoples are recognized and respected in the life of our city. Thank you. The clerk will now call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Here.
Counselor Condon.
Here.
Counselor Crowe.
Here.
Counselor McDonald.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley.
Here.
Counselor Seega.
Here.
Counselor Simonelli. We're going to need you to unmute when you speak to us tonight, Counselor Simonelli. He's online with us.
I'm here. I'm here.
Counselor Spatafora.
You hear me?
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Here.
Counselor President Linehan.
Here.
So we are all in attendance, and because Counselor Simonelli is coming in video, all votes tonight will be taken by roll call.
Yes, thank you for reminding us of that. Okay, so under the provisions of the open meeting law, for those of you in attendance, please be informed that UMA Urban Media Arts will be recording this evening's meeting. So just to be aware, there will be audio and video recordings of tonight's meeting. First order of business.
Counselor.
Oh, yep, sorry, one second. Oh, hang on. I think I'm missing a mouse here. One moment. Yes, Counselor O'Malley.
I move to suspend Rule 54.02 so that Counselor Simonelli can participate. That is the rule that limits attendees online to three per year. So I'd just like to move to suspend that rule.
So just for clarity, are you stating that he has exceeded his third meeting?
I just want, out of abundance of caution.
I don't think that's necessary because the state has extended the COVID laws, saying that things like this will be extended for another year. So that kind of supersedes our council rulebook as far as attendance goes.
Okay, understood. So what the clerk is saying, that the state's COVID, the extension to the COVID rules is actually above and beyond our council rules. I also did check, I'm not of the impression that he's exceeded his third meeting. I don't want to get into Counselor Simonelli's private business, but we are communicating with him if he needs to continue to participate remotely. That would actually fall under an HR accommodation, so I don't really want to discuss the particulars of his situation of why he's coming in remote at all.
Yeah, that's not my intention.
Okay, but I don't think we need to actually vote as a council on whether he's coming in remotely or whether he's allowed to do that or not.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, are you good? Okay. Okay, next order of business.
On behalf of the Zonta Club of Malden, we have Maria Louise and Kathleen Manning Hall to appear before the City Council to promote Zonta's 16 Days of Activism, to end domestic violence, and to explain the silent witness display located in our lobby.
Okay. Welcome. Yeah, you're on now, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. Most of you are familiar with our organization. I know some councilors are members. Counselor Linehan spoke at our fall conference a couple of weeks ago, and you've all supported us through the years, and we appreciate it. Tonight, we're here as part of our 16 Days of Activism. I think most of you know that the Zonta Club of Malden is part of Zonta International, and our mission is to empower women and girls worldwide through service and advocacy. In this time of year, November 25th, that kicks off tonight, to December 10th, we engage in 16 Days of Activism, and we promote our Zonta Says No to Domestic Violence campaign. So we're here tonight to start that. We put out a display that's out in the lobby. They're called the Silent Witnesses, and we usually kick it off, kick off the 16 days with that display. Fortunately, public facilities allows us to do it here in the lobby. Each one of the silhouettes that you see represents an individual whose life was ended by domestic violence, and they are called silent witnesses because they can no longer speak for themselves. So we speak for them by telling their story, and on December 10th, we ask that you join us. We'll have a ceremony here in the lobby to represent those that can't speak for themselves and that have died because of domestic violence during this past year here in Massachusetts. So that being said, we do want to invite everyone to stand with us as allies against this cause and bring domestic violence to the forefront during these 16 days. We've gone through the community, we've visited the police department, the fire department, we're going to do the library soon, and here at City Hall, and we travel with our banner that says Zonta Says No, and we'd like to do it with the City Council this evening. We have many of our Zonta members here, so we invite you to join us in the fight.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions or comments? Counselor Winslow.
Yes. What time on the 10th?
6:30.
6:30, oh great, great, thank you. But thank you for doing this so much. You know, as someone whose family's been affected by domestic violence, really appreciate the attention of this, hearing from women who had to, and as well as anybody who's had to experience this, before we had resources and a focus on this, you know, municipalities' reaction to domestic violence, that's just a family issue. So it's something that has really changed in at least my lifetime, and it's made a tremendous difference for a lot of families. But we have to continue, domestic violence continues, so it's important every year to remember. So I appreciate the Zonta doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Winslow. Any others? Counselor, hang on, Counselor Taylor.
Thank you so much. I just want to thank Maria for being here tonight, and for the rest of the Zonta Club members who are here to participate. I am proud to be a Zantian, and thankful that so many people have signed on as allies against domestic violence. Thank you.
And I also want to mention that I'm here on behalf of Sharon Rose Iberg, who's head of our Advocacy and Service Committee. She couldn't be here because of a family matter, but she's definitely the one that's been working to bring this campaign forward here in Malden.
Okay, well, did you want to take a recess now to do?
We'd love that.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, our next order of business is public comment. Public comment is allowed under council rules. Each speaker is limited to subject matter relevant to this evening's agenda, and everyone must keep their comments to two minutes or less. Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for public comment this evening?
We do not have anybody in person for public comment this evening, but we do have emails.
Okay, let's, how many emails do we have tonight?
Five, I think.
Okay, so we have enough that we can read them?
We have enough that, yeah, we've got plenty of time.
Okay, great. Let's go ahead and read those then.
So the first one says, hello, I am a lifetime resident of Malden, which according to some council members makes me the enemy. I am writing to you in support of 455-25 to implement a hiring freeze. I also feel very strongly that any current position that was initially funded under the one-time ARPA funding be reviewed. Regards, Maria Marashi, 16 Springdale Street. The next one says, I just wanted to quickly state that I understand the idea behind the hiring freeze. However, I'm just confused why this is sponsored by SEGA. It sounded like she was really upset that Jeff Donahue wasn't approved to join the vocational school board, which would have been a paid position and made him qualify for his pension from the city. Samantha LeBlanc, 30 Daniel Street. Dear Clerk and Council Members, let me first preface that I appreciate you and all of our city employees for your hard work and dedication to the city, whether we agree or disagree on issues. It's not easy being in the public sector with people coming at you from all directions and trying to keep everyone happy. We all know that is impossible task. With that being said, I am writing to support Resolution 455-25 Hiring Freeze, sponsored by Council SEGA. I urge the council to vote in favor of this resolution. I believe this would be a proactive first step in showing the residents of Malden that the city is working towards areas to help resolve the financial dilemma currently being faced. Additionally, I urge the council to not support a special election for a tax override until further measures and savings can be explored. Thank you for your consideration, along with your commitment and dedication to Malden. Wishing you all a very happy and peaceful Thanksgiving. Sincerely, Janice Rice, Henry Street. Ward 7. I am writing in support of Jaden Seega's motion 455-25. The citizens of Malden, along with the citizens of the United States, are being squeezed already with tariff policies, making everything more expensive. Squeezed with corporations buying our property and then charging sky-high rents, squeezed by the horrendous bill which will cut subsidies from ACA pricing, many out of the health insurance market. Maldonians do not need a Prop 2.5 override because the city cannot balance its budget. SEGA seems to be the only one attempting to find alternatives that don't further squeeze Maldonians. This order should pass. Marjorie Welch, Lowell Street. Dear City Council, I am writing today in support of tonight's council agenda item, Resolution 455-25. This resolution would be a good first step in the city addressing the upcoming predicted budget shortfall that may result in a Proposition 2.5 override vote. I applaud Council SEGA for putting this resolve on the agenda. Sincerely, James Sumner, 759 Highland Avenue, Malden. And that is all of them.
Okay, thank you to our clerk. Our next order of business is the consent agenda. This evening's consent agenda consists of meeting minutes to be approved, one appointment to be placed on file, four petitions to be referred to the License Committee, and one communication to be placed on file. Does any counselor have a desire to remove any of these items from the consent agenda for the purpose of further discussion?
Motion.
Okay, seeing none, we have a motion to approve by Counselor Seega. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, the clerk will call the roll, given Counselor Simonelli is joining us remotely.
To approve the consent agenda, Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counselor President Linehan.
Yes.
Okay, that is an 11 to 0 vote.
Okay, fantastic. Next order of business.
Paper 454-25, mayoral reappointment. Building Commissioner Nelson L. Miller, 235 Beach Avenue, Melrose, as Director of Inspection Services. Said term to commence upon confirmation by the City Council and to expire on December 19th, 2028.
Okay, so we'd be looking to refer this to personnel. Counselor Crowe, do you want to refer this paper?
We could do it on the floor, but I think having a good conversation with, and can still invite him in.
Okay, great. So on a motion by Counselor Crowe to refer this to the personnel.
Did you want to approve it on the floor?
I think we should do it on the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Still will bring him in just to have that conversation. I think he answers everybody, but I think he's.
Okay.
Yep.
So on a motion to approve on the floor.
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Seega. The clerk will call the roll.
Okay, to confirm the reappointment of Building Commissioner Miller. Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
So that appointment has been confirmed by an 11 to 0 vote.
Okay, thank you. Next order of business.
Paper 455-25, resolve that it is the sense of the Malden City Council that the City of Malden impose an immediate hiring freeze on all new vacant or soon-to-be vacant positions across all City of Malden departments, boards, and commissions. No position shall be posted or filled unless expressly approved by vote of the City Council. This hiring freeze shall remain in effect until further order of the City Council. May I just say, this, a snapshot of this, I think, was getting circulated to the city as an order, but the agenda was revised, and this is actually a resolve.
Yes, thank you for mentioning that, because I did want to point that out. I had a couple of questions about that as well, and the difference being that in order, obviously orders a department to do something, whereas a resolve is the sense of the City Council. Okay, thank you to our clerk, Counselor Seega, for the paper. For the resolve, sorry.
Thank you, Counselor President. Yes, I noticed it immediately as soon as it came out, and I called to change it from the order to the resolve. So I apologize for that. I think it was literally within 15 minutes of it going out that it was revised, but it somehow already had gotten out that way. So the paper pretty much speaks for itself. While we can't order the mayor to implement a hiring freeze and come before us for every single job opening, board, and commission, I think that we really need to take a look and set our priorities, especially with the discussions about the Prop 2.5 that we've been having. We can't, we have to show some sort of responsibility to the residents that we're doing everything possible to control the costs that we take, and we can't ask Malden taxpayers to pay more while we continue to add positions to the payroll without a full financial review. So I'm just hoping that everybody up here will support this. I've seen this on Facebook, you know, tons of residents. I'm pretty sure we've kind of already have a little bit of something going on. I don't think we've been told formally what that is, but I think that this will send a message up to the mayor and everybody else that, you know, maybe it's only people that we need to have, that we cannot absolutely live without at this moment, should we be filling those positions. So I hope everybody supports this resolve. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Seega. Okay, first in the queue, I have Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counselor Seega. I appreciate you putting out these ideas, and one of the questions I had is, you had stated that the City Council cannot order the mayor, but I didn't interpret your paper as ordering the mayor. I viewed it as ordering department heads, so why was the mayor mentioned?
Sorry, one second. It would be all of them, because they're not all under our control, Counselor O'Malley. All the department heads are not all under our control, so we can't order people that don't report to us to do things.
Yes, we can. We do all the time. So if we write, and I'm not, I don't think.
Well, I'm not in the, I'm not in the practice of ordering people that don't report to us. I'm not even in the practice of people that report to us, ordering them what to do. I think that they're in their job for a reason, because they're good at what they do, and I'm good at what I do over here, so I'm just, I don't. Go ahead, finish yours.
Yeah, so I think that, this is just my, I think, in terms of the council's power, you know, we're a co-equal branch of government. We often have confirmation, approval, like we just confirmed the appointment of our building commissioner, but like whether it's, you know, accessory dwelling units and using a particular process, or writing an ordinance that has to be executed in a certain way, the City Council orders all of our department heads to do things. I see where you're coming from, but I do think that if we wanted to order any department head, the question would be whether or not they decide to comply, but we absolutely have the power. And if I remember correctly, it was Counselor Anderson that said the only individual that we cannot order in the city is the mayor. So I think you are correct. We do not have the power to order the mayor, the same way the mayor doesn't have the power to order us. But thank you for putting your paper forward.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor McDonald.
Yeah, thank you. And I appreciate the, you know, the sentiment towards, like, let's be constructive, towards filling this budget gap that we know we have. For folks who didn't tune into the Finance Committee meeting that was happening just before this, we did hear from the mayor that there is effectively a hiring freeze like this in place right now, which is to say that only positions that are specially approved by the mayor are able to be posted. And I think, I mean, I support that. I think that that's correct. I would like to be able to support this paper, but I would need, I think I would need some amendments to it in order for that to happen. One is that I don't think that we should be in the position of the council approving specific appointments. Like, I just don't think that's viable, nor do I think it's our role to, or, excuse me, specific postings. So I have that concern. Two, I want to say that a number of our union contracts require timely posting of things, and so I don't know if we've done a review of whether those, whether this triggers any concerns from any of those contracts. So we could either try to make an exemption for that as required by law or by contract, or just be clear that it is as, you know, as required, as necessary, or that are critical for the functioning of the city, or something like that. And I think that the, and I also just want to ask why you've included all boards and commissions in the same thing as a staff person? Because I think board and commission appointments automatically come up for reappointment. Only a few of them are stipended, and those that are stipended is like very small amounts of money, and our boards and commissions meet very sporadically. They may or may not, you know, have the ability to deal with a vacancy. So why the boards and commissions at the same time as all of the staff roles, which I think have a much more, you know, direct impact on the budget?
Counselor Seega, would you like to respond?
I can briefly, really quickly. I don't mind making amendments. This is just a resolve, so it's really just us saying, you know, try to do better type of a thing. This isn't, they do not have to follow this by the letter of the law, so if you want to make amendments to it, I am fine with that. There are some boards and commissions that have seats that are necessary and not necessary. I was just, I threw those in there thinking that, you know, even if it's $2,000, $3,000, I mean, money adds up, and it would eliminate, you know, a potential position that we would lose. So I was just trying to think of everything, everybody, not just particularly the employees, but the boards and commissions as well. There are some boards and commissions that don't meet regularly. I know that we've had discussions, or I've talked to, you know, Chuck and a few other people where they've been talking about, you know, potentially lowering some of those stipends, so that's just why I included the boards and commissions into that particular resolve. And again, it's just a resolve. It's not law binding, binding, excuse me, or, you know, anything like that, so that's just why I included them.
Would it be okay if we asked Maria Louise to come forward and just say, to ask if the administration has an opinion on this resolution, or, and more of a, did I characterize what was said in the Finance Committee correctly? Like, do you understand there to be?
Yeah, please.
A hiring freeze in place with exceptions from the mayor? How would you characterize the current policy?
I wouldn't call it a hiring freeze, but it's more of a pause. Each position that becomes vacant is, you know, we have to evaluate it, assess it, talk to the department heads. There are some positions that have to be filled. You know, if we lost one of the directors in the next few days, that has to be filled. There are other, you know, vacancies that departments can't do without. So we take each, I call it a pause. We take each one that comes and evaluate it before we move forward on it, whereas before vacancies were just filled. If there was a resignation or retirement, they were just filled. But right now, we think about it, you know, whether there can be a restructuring, whether the position can be, you know, reformatted, you know, we just assess it in a different way. But I wouldn't call it a freeze.
Okay. Do you have any, if we clarified, if we clarified the mayor's authority in this, do you have concerns about this resolution, this resolve?
If it's a resolve, I don't think I do. It gives, it just gives the sense of the council. You know, I think an order would have been different. Boards and commissions are concerning, having that as part of it, because that, those vacancies come up more often, so you don't want, you know, you want to make sure that your boards and commissions have a meeting quorum and, you know, are functioning efficiently, so that pauses, you know, poses more of a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Maria, can I ask a follow-up question to Counselor McDonald's question on the specificity of the resolve? Understanding it's just the sense of the council, if we condensed it quite a bit to just state something simpler, such as it's the sense of the council that we, you know, support the administration implementing a discretionary hiring freeze or pause, and just leave it as simple as that, take out the boards and commissions, something like that? That way, it's more, we're rowing in the same direction, the council and the administration are, we support what you're already doing, and we support that there has to be some discretion in this. Would something, would an edit or an amendment along those lines be something that would be not adversarial and capture a little bit of what you're saying?
Yeah, that would be fine. That would, that would definitely not be looked at as adversarial at all.
Okay, okay, thank you. Do you have further comments?
Just that, I do think it's meaningful for the council to say something like this so that the administration knows that, you know, we're on the same page about that. So I do appreciate that, and I would support an amendment along the lines that you just, that you just asked about, Counsel President.
Okay. Counselor Seega, did you have something in response to what Maria was?
I do.
Okay, yeah, really quickly, and then I'd have a lot of lights on.
I am totally fine with those amendments, but I just want to go on record with stating that I did not know that we had any sort of a pause in place until after this paper was posted to the agenda, and then I was told. So at least my paper started the conversation about that, because me sitting up here as a sitting city council had no idea that we had that pause already in place. So I'm happy to hear that it was already in place, and this is, again, just the resolve. If you want to remove the boards and commissions, I am totally fine with it, but I just want to make sure we're making sure the positions that need to be filled get filled, and the ones that don't, maybe we can hold off for now to, and, you know, look back at them when we figure out the whole Prop 2.5 override discussion. So thank you.
Okay, understood. And I do see your hand, Counselor Simonelli. We will get to you in the queue in just a moment. I have next Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, no, I know when the override first came up, one of the questions I raised was, is it something we're considering? So I appreciate Counselor Seega putting it forward, and that the mayor. I actually just have a very simple amendment, to basically put a period after, across all city departments, and then just delete everything else. I don't think we have to overthink this. I think we're on the same page with the mayor.
Period after departments?
Yeah, we'll just say, you know, we are, the sense is, Malden City Council, the City of Malden imposed an immediate hiring freeze on all new vacant or soon-to-be vacant positions across all the city, of all City of Malden departments, period.
Second.
So, yeah, so just something simple, and I do agree, we don't want to take a chance of a board or commission losing members to the point where we don't have a quorum. I mean, if our planning board doesn't have a quorum, things might get automatically approved, so I think this is simple, it gets the spirit, and it is just a resolve. I was concerned about the last line. I was concerned about the last line, because it talks about ordering. The other two lines talk about, you know, seem to be a little bit more still in the tone of order. So I think it's a simple that way. And I just don't think we should, you know, spend a lot of time wordsmithing on something that's just a sense. So, thank you. That's my.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Winslow. Counselor O'Malley?
I can defer to Counselor Semenelli, because I've already spoken.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry, you did already speak on this. I, so I will take Counselor Cologne Hayes, and then will you, can you help me get Counselor Semenelli?
I think he's prepared to speak. All we have to do is just let him know it's his turn.
Okay, I'm going to take Counselor Cologne Hayes first, and then Counselor Semenelli will take you next. Okay, thank you. Okay. So I agree, I think it's a good idea to have, I'm not sure about the word "freeze", based on what Maria Luiz was just saying here, maybe a pause, but we could use freeze. My only concern with this was about possible directors. Like, if we lost, for, you know, knock on wood, like, something of the DPW director, I can't imagine that we could function without a director level. So if you feel it's okay to just put a period after that, I would like to see something like, let me think, essential employees, like, could we make, could we say something that's aside from essential, or is that, would that? I had offered the word discretionary to try to capture that. Discretionary, oh, okay. That's why I had tried to say something that gives that leeway to, you know, the administration to make those case-by-case, I guess, determinations. All right, then that, I would be fine with that. I just wanted to make sure that even, although it is a resolve, that, you know, we're understanding that there are certain positions that we can't run without. But I have no problem not hiring, yeah, putting a freeze on other things. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Semenelli, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. All right, well, I have a point of information for us from earlier. So I just want to say that I appreciate everybody's concern on where my whereabouts are, but I'm not kidnapped. I'm actually in Laguna Beach, California, having a great time on vacation from that last campaign over and ever that we just got through with for like six months straight, and doing the city council stuff and putting people in treatment. So I appreciate everybody's concern, but this is only my second time on Zoom. So I just want to make sure you all understand that. As far as this paper, thank you. So as far as this paper is concerned, I support the paper. And look, I think that Counselor Winslow said it the best, that we don't have to overthink it. I think the mayor is in sync, his whole administration's in sync. We all know that we have a serious deficit problem that we're trying to overcome. And, you know, look, we put a higher freeze, I would take the boards and commissions out of there, because I don't know if that's a charter issue that you'd end up having with that or not, that would be legal to decide that. But, you know, I think that just putting out a hiring freeze, you know, and addressing Counselor Hayes's concern of a department head, you know, we can always throw out the freeze and put that person in that position, because the funding is actually budgeted for that line item. So I support the paper, you know, I think that we should take the boards and commissions out of it. And I think that everybody, unless you've been living under a rock lately, are concerned about the Prop 2.5 and where we're going to be in the next couple of years. So I think everybody got a pretty good handle on it, and we're all trying to do the best that we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Semenelli. All right, I'm going to go back to Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you. Yeah, so when the paper was put on the agenda, you know, the first conversation or email I sent was to our HR Director, Odalisa Macedo, and, you know, I had just kind of asked, can you get me caught up on like what's currently going on? And, you know, to the same thing that was shared by the administration, you know, there is a pause going on. And my understanding that there's really only one position that is currently still being actively, you know, sought after, and that's a public health role. So I think they are taking it, you know, with, you know, a good balance to make sure the things that are essential are still going to be filled. And so I did second Counselor Winslow's motion. And with that, if we are able to amend the paper, I would gladly be added as a sponsor. So again, thank you, Counselor Seega, for starting this conversation at the council level, and I appreciate that the administration and our HR Director has been working on this behind the scenes.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor McDonald?
Counselor Winslow, would you be open to a friendly amendment, to your amendment, to add the word discretionary, an immediate discretionary hiring freeze? Mostly, I just want to make sure that, like, while yes, it is a resolve, but, you know, your average Maldonian who spends time to dig up legislative records can sometimes, you know, read more into things than we mean. So I just think it's helpful to say what we mean, and I feel like that captures the spirit of where we're at. So I'm happy to support that. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion to amend by Counselor Winslow, seconded by Counselor O'Malley, to essentially delete from the word "no" onward, and then add the word discretionary before the word, or after the word "immediate"?
No, it's after the word.
I'm sorry, after the word, tell me where you want it?
I think it's after City of Malden departments.
Got it.
We're going to put a period there and delete the rest of the paragraph.
Understood, understood.
And then also put the word discretionary in between "immediate hiring".
Got it. Okay. Does everybody understand what we're voting on? Okay, so on the motion to amend, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Counselor Semenelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Council President Linehan.
Yes.
And I am also adding Counselor O'Malley's name as a co-sponsor to that paper. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we now need a motion on the resolve.
Motion.
Okay. So moved by Counselor Seega, seconded by Counselor O'Malley. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Counselor Semenelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Council President Linehan.
Yes.
Okay, that resolve has been passed.
Okay.
As amended.
That is passed as amended. Thank you to the clerk. Next order of business.
The next four papers are enrolled ordinances that just need to be ordained. The first is 275-25, be it ordained by the Malden City Council, that the code of the City of Malden 1.04.070 procedure for selling tax title property is hereby amended by striking it in its entirety and inserting the following, as is attached in the body of the paper.
Okay, Counselor Winslow for the paper.
Yeah, just to remind everybody, this is something that our Treasurer's Office put forward. Because of some legal cases, as well as some statutory changes, when we take tax title property now, we actually, if the, we, property is sold for more than the taxes do, we have to create reserve funds. And this also clarifies that in some situations, we might want to purchase the property and keep it ourselves, others want. So it's just to create that procedure on how we do tax title consistent with the law, you know, both statute and as well as Supreme Court rulings. So we voted to enroll it. This is just a vote to ordain, so I make a motion to ordain the ordinance.
Okay, do I have a second on ordaining the ordinance? Okay, seconded by Counselor Crowe, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Counselor Semenelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Council President Linehan.
Yes.
Okay, that paper has been ordained by an 11 to 0 vote.
Okay, thank you. Next ordinance.
Paper 276-25, be it ordained by the Malden City Council, that the code of the City of Malden 9.16 rental units inspection required, is hereby amended, as is outlined in the body of the attached paper.
Okay, Counselor Winslow. Are you, there you go.
Yes, okay, there we go. Yeah, I mean, we did vote to enroll this last time. You know, this is a paper that Counselor McDonald was the lead sponsor on. We had talked about this in rules and ordinance, made various changes, and that has been reflected in the record now. So now it's just a matter of voting to ordain the paper as we voted to amend it. So thank you.
Okay, Counselor McDonald, would you like to move to ordain?
I would.
Okay, on a motion by Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor Winslow? Okay, sounds great. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Counselor Semenelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Council President Linehan.
Yes.
Okay, that paper has been ordained by an 11 to 0 vote.
Okay, great, next paper.
Paper 277-25, be it ordained by the Malden City Council, that the code of the City of Malden 9.24.010, regulation of lead pipes in residential housing, is hereby amended, as outlined in the body of the paper.
Counselor Winslow again.
Yeah, we did enroll this last time. This was really to do something in parallel with the rental registry. And just clarify that we're asking that as, the rental registry was going to help do more inspections of rental units. So this was to look to make sure that the lead, any, there's testing for lead in the water as part of that inspection. So this just updated a bit of our regulation of lead pipes to clarify how the process will work in terms of inspecting the water, and asking that the owners get the water tested in conjunction with the inspection. So that's really the purpose of this, was sort of done in parallel. So Counselor McDonald has more to say, but yeah.
Do you have anything you want to add? Okay, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a quick clarification, that we have changed it slightly so that if you are certified by the Department of Engineering, that you don't have lead service lines coming into your property, then you don't have to do the testing.
Right.
Like, that's, it's actually just about trying to make sure that we can confirm that you don't have the lines. And so just for folks, just, because that is different from what's been in the past. So all this is really doing is updating the enforcement of our existing ordinance to the rental registry regular inspections. But the ordinance itself, that rental units should not have lead lines, has been in place for years. And I think Counselor Spatafora might have, was this part of the, did you sponsor this at the same time as the, yeah, this is the same ordinance that also requires that you replace the lines at the point that you sell the property? So this is just, we are updating the enforcement mechanism for that existing ordinance.
Understood.
Thanks for that clarification.
Okay.
So I make a motion to ordain this.
Okay, on a motion by Counselor Winslow, seconded by Counselor McDonald to ordain this, will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Counselor Semenelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Council President Linehan.
Yes.
Okay, that paper has been ordained by an 11 to 0 vote.
Okay, and the final paper?
Paper 361-25, be it ordained by the Malden City Council, that the code of the City of Malden 2.24.015, department head salary schedule is hereby amended by adding the updated salary schedule chart effective July 1, 2025.
Okay, Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, so we did vote to amend the paper. There was a schedule submitted to the council for three years of changes to the salary schedule for these positions. The committee recommended that we approve the first year and sort of put the other two years aside. We didn't vote those, recommend one way or another. And so we did vote at the council meeting where this came up and was enrolled, we did vote to change the schedule for this fiscal year, and then just, we can wait till, you know, later to decide about approving the other changes to the schedule. So we, it's going step by step. So that's what we're voting on, is to change the schedule for this fiscal year, you know, starting July 1, 2025. So our department heads would get the, this year's salary raises, right? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Winslow. Any questions, further discussion? Okay, on a motion by Counselor Winslow, seconded by Counselor.
Hello.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see your hand.
All right.
Okay, Counselor Semenelli, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I don't know, I'm just a little confused. So we're going to give a raise to the department heads. Look, I got nothing against the department heads, I work with them all the time. But again, you know, we're going to be scheduling raises, giving raises, and we're looking for the taxpayers to pay more on their property taxes on a 2.5, potentially 2.5 override, whenever, get it all chopped up and make it look nice. I just, you know, can someone explain that to me? Oh?
Okay, Counselor Winslow or Counselor McDonald? I can take either or both of you.
No, I mean, I think we're just trying to make a fair balance. I mean, this schedule was negotiated way before the override was considered. We have done a lot of three-year contracts for a lot of our unions. The department head was sort of the last. So we're just trying to create a fair balance. The normal procedure would have been just to approve the MOA for three years. Given the override, the thought was, let's create a balance here, that we'll, we have the money budgeted this fiscal year in hand, and, you know, we are, you know, already spending kind of a deficit. So the thought is, and, you know, this is what the paper is, we can't ordain this or not, but we tried to strike a balance between respecting, you know, something that's fairly bargained versus our financial situation. So I think that's, you know, that was why we voted to do it, sort of a piece at a time, so that we will know in June, when we know what, whether an override has been put on the ballot, voted on, and we'll know what our financial situation there, and we, you know, we'll take it up there. But we were trying to just create a fair balance between a fairly negotiated agreement and, you know, the budget, you know, situation that came up after that was, the agreement was signed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Winslow. Counselor McDonald?
Yeah, thank you. I'll just hone in on the fact that there is no finance paper that is attached to this paper, because we already budgeted for this. This doesn't change any of the future fiscal years, because the, we didn't adopt any of that, we didn't recommend any of those changes. And the Prop 2.5 override conversation is about next fiscal year. So we're just dealing with the year that we've already budgeted, and we already had the money to spend, is, is how I think about it. And to Counselor Winslow's point, if we don't do this, what it does is force the, it would force the mayor to reopen the bargaining negotiations with the department heads, which, you know, to be honest, I'd rather have them looking for ways to make their departments more efficient than arguing with the mayor's team at the moment. So I actually think we need the leadership of our department heads right now, and so to pay them the money that we already budgeted to pay them in the current fiscal year feels reasonable to me.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald.
May I, may I respond?
Uh, yep, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Look, I'm, I'm not looking to make anybody be insufficient or argue with department heads, and I understand collective bargaining, impact bargaining, I've done it with the Department of Corrections and ten different bargaining units, that's what I did. So I'm not questioning that, but let me ask you, what's the number? What would be the overall number? And if we did it, let's say we didn't, which I'm probably gonna, but I'm saying if we did it, could, that money could potentially, even though it was funded, and we don't know what's coming in the future, couldn't that money would be left over at the end of this year and go back into the general fund to help offset some other costs potentially? But what's the overall number? Because I haven't heard one. I mean, these are the things that we should be talking about and concerned, like, what's the overall number for this, for the department head raises? And can we, if we wanted to, if we say we didn't give it to them, which it looks like we're gonna, but I'm saying if we didn't, this is for the public, if we didn't, how much, what is that number? And could that go back into the general fund? Those are my questions.
So, Counselor Simonelli, let me just say, I don't think we got a specific estimate of this because it had already been budgeted. I mean, this is a pretty standard cost of living adjustment, and I believe if we did not approve this, they would be the only classification of employees to not get a cost of living adjustment this year. Is that right, Maria? Okay, the only existing agreement. The others are in negotiations right now. So I think that would set them apart from the other staff. So we did not ask for the cost because it had already been budgeted and we'd already approved it.
Are you, are you good with that, Counselor Simonelli? Because we do have a couple other lights, I'd like to move on and we can come back since we're, since we aren't talking about a financial paper.
No, go ahead, no, I'm fine, I'm fine. I'm okay.
Okay, okay, thank you. Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Thank you. So this is, the last time this came up, I did vote no because at that time I heard that rank and file folks still didn't have a contract signed, and so I'm sure this is going to pass tonight, but I'm going to vote no on this again, just to keep steady based on what we heard and also hearing from our rank and file that they don't have a signed contract either, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor O'Malley?
I have the answers. So, okay, so I have to say, Counselor Simonelli, I appreciate your, your contribution to this discussion. As Counselor Cologne Hayes did just remind us, yourself, myself, Counselor Cologne Hayes and Counselor Condon voted against enrolling this ordinance the last time for the exact reasons that you were mentioning. I did actually ask what the financial impact would be of this, and for fiscal year 2026, it's over a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. For 2020, well, and for 2027, it would be sixty-four thousand, and then an additional fifty-seven thousand, or sixty-six thousand the following years. But I think you are correct, if the money is not spent, it does get rolled into next year into our general fund, it would be a turnback. So there would be a, a, a impact, a financial benefit impact to next fiscal year. So I continue to be opposed, I think it sends the wrong message at the moment, but I understand where everyone else is coming from also. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Do I have any further discussion questions on this? Okay.
I have a motion to ordain.
Okay, so a motion by Counselor Winslow to ordain. Do I have a second? Second by Counselor Taylor. Okay, the clerk will now call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
No.
No. Counselor Condon.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I didn't realize he stepped out, I'm sorry, I wouldn't have started the roll. I think we should wait just a second.
Can someone go get him? Someone go get him?
How, how about you?
I can't, not from where I'm at. I'm twenty-five hundred miles away, fellas. Next week I'll go get him.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor O'Malley.
No.
Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simonelli.
No.
No. Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor President Linehan.
Yes.
That is a seven to three. Do you want me to call it or wait another minute for Counsel Condon?
I'm okay if we call it.
We're okay if we call it.
Yeah. You think so? Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't realize that he had stepped out, I would have waited.
I didn't even see him leaving.
Yeah.
Just curious what his vote would be anyway.
Counselor Condon, I think I heard you say you wanted to vote yes to ordain the salary schedule for the, okay, so-
Okay.
Counselor Condon indicated his vote is a yes. That means that passes by an eight to three vote.
Okay. So that is ordained.
That paper is ordained.
Okay. Okay, next order of business.
Paper four fifty-six dash twenty-five, committee report, the standing committee on personnel and appointments, to whom was referred paper four oh eight, series of 2025. Having considered the same, make the following report.
Okay, on a motion by Counselor Crowe, seconded by Counselor Cologne Hayes to accept the committee report, clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counselor President Linehan.
Yes.
So the report has been received.
Okay, will you please read the paper?
Paper four oh eight dash twenty-five, mayoral appointment, Olivia Hemmings, seven sixty-nine Main Street, apartment one Malden, as a member of the Conservation Commission, said term to commence upon confirmation by the city council and to expire September fifteenth, 2027.
Okay, Counselor Crowe for the paper.
Thank you, Madam President. So earlier this evening, we met with Ms. Hemmings, and she just recently, only a couple months ago, moved to Malden and wanted to jump right in, looked at the city website and really wanted to find where she could fit in her professional and personal things, you know, that she could bring to the city. And so she did look at the climate action plan, Counselor McDonald, the, and then she saw on the Conservation Commission that there was, there was an opening, so she, she jumped right in. We had a wonderful conversation with her, and she is an ecologist and environmental scientist, and, and she is well-versed in environmental regulations. She talked about some experience with municipal stormwater management and green stormwater infrastructure. So councils had some great questions, really some great conversations about what she could bring to the table and what the table can bring to her too. And so she was really excited to, to dive in and, and make her mark in Malden. So by unanimous vote, we made a motion to approve this appointment.
Okay, great. So on a motion by Counselor Crowe to approve the appointment, I agree, she was lovely, we had a great conversation, really enjoyed meeting her. Counselor O'Malley, yes, you have the floor.
May I make the motion to approve?
It is your constituent.
Thank you.
Okay, on a motion by Counselor O'Malley, seconded by Counselor Crowe, will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counselor President Linehan.
Yes.
So that confirmation passes by an eleven to zero vote.
Okay, next paper, next report.
Paper four five seven dash twenty-five, committee report, the standing committee on license, to whom was referred papers three seven oh and four oh nine through four thirty-one, series of 2025. Having considered the same, make the following report.
Okay, on a motion by Counselor Seega, seconded by Counselor Taylor, oh, Counselor Taylor's not here. Who was in, okay, thank you, Counselor McDonald, to accept the committee report, clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counselor President Linehan.
Yes.
Ten to zero vote.
Oof, these are a lot of petitions. Do we want to read all of these?
Yep.
Okay.
You know which ones to read altogether, right?
Do we? I don't.
So, do you want me to?
You can, so read them all except for that one that we've decided to table?
Well, we've got two that are table down here.
That one, yeah, those two.
Yep, so we're going to keep those aside and read all these.
And then the other ones, when you read them, just read them conditionally.
I will, yep.
How's that?
Counselor Cologne Hayes has a recusal she needs to do, she's had for one of them.
Oh.
I don't know which one.
Chris Bergen.
Chris Bergen?
Oh. The tarot card?
Understood, okay.
Why?
Um, I think that was their campaign manager.
Oh, oh, oh. Okay. Paper three seven oh dash twenty-five, class two license, AGM Auto Sales Incorporated, one sixty Eastern Avenue, twenty-one cars renewal. This was recommended as a conditional approval for three months. Petition four oh nine dash twenty-five, amusement machines, loyal order of the Moose Lodge, nineteen-ten, five sixty-two Broadway, two machines renewal. Paper four ten dash twenty-five, amusement machines, Italian American War Veterans Post, sixteen forty Oakland Street, four machines renewal. Four eleven dash twenty-five, amusement machines, Pearl Street Station, fifty-three Summer Street, two machines renewal. Paper four twelve dash twenty-five, petition class two, Broadway Auto Sales, six twenty-eight Broadway, zero cars renewal. Paper four thirteen dash twenty-five, petition class two, GP Motorcycle Supplies, four twenty Broadway, Malden, four motorcycles renewal. Paper four fourteen dash twenty-five, petition class two license, Prestige Motors of Malden Incorporated, six hundred Broadway, thirty-seven cars renewal, that was a conditional recommendation. Petition four fifteen dash twenty-five, class two, Prestigious Motors of Malden Incorporated, five ninety Broadway, thirty cars renewal, also that was a conditional recommendation. Paper four sixteen dash twenty-five, class two, Reliance Motor Auto Group, LLC, twenty-eight Broadway, thirty-eight cars renewal. Paper four seventeen dash twenty-five, class two, Richard Motor Cars Incorporated, six seventy-two Broadway, seventy-seven cars renewal. Paper four eighteen dash twenty-five, class two, River Auto Sales Incorporated, seventy-seven Eastern Avenue, twenty-one cars renewal. Paper four nineteen dash twenty-five, class two, Scott M. Fitzpatrick, DBA Wentworth Auto Sales, seven thirty Eastern Avenue, fifteen spaces renewal. Paper four twenty dash twenty-five, class two, Top Cars Motor Group Incorporated, two five nine Main Street, thirty cars renewal. Paper four twenty-one dash twenty-five, class three, Malden Broadway Autobody Incorporated, five ninety Broadway, renewal. Paper four twenty-two dash twenty-five, extended hours, Williams Services LLC, DBA Laundry Plus, seven oh five Eastern Avenue, hours, seven days, open to the public, five AM to eleven PM, open twenty-four hours a day for commercial purposes, renewal. Paper four twenty-three dash twenty-five, extended hours, eat the opening restaurant, one B Highland Avenue, hours, Tuesday and Wednesday, eleven AM to one AM, Thursday through Sunday, seven AM to one AM new. Paper four dash twenty-four, four twenty-four dash twenty-five, excuse me, extended hours, Main Street Laundromat, seven eighty Main Street, hours, seven days, five AM to eleven PM, renewal. Paper four twenty-five dash twenty-five, extended hours, G&amp;V Convenience Incorporated, DBA Supreme Food Mart, ten eighteen Eastern Avenue, hours, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, renewal. Paper four twenty-six dash twenty-five, petition extended hours, The Brewster Company, DBA McDonald's, one fourteen Broadway, hours, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, conditional upon the dining room closing at nine PM, the drive-through is open twenty-four seven. Paper four twenty-seven dash twenty-five, extended hours, Speedway LLC, four store, four four, two two two, two on four Broadway, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, renewal. Paper four twenty-eight dash twenty-five, extended hours, UD Foods Incorporated, DBA Seven Eleven, one six nine Salem Street, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, renewal. Paper four twenty-nine dash twenty-five, Fortune Teller, Chris Bergen, Full Heart Tarot Readings and More, seventy-three Linden Avenue, apartment number one, renewal. And then there were two papers on the agenda, but we are not taking them up tonight because they were tabled in committee, the final two. The final two, paper four three oh and four three one, were both tabled in committee, so we're not referring those out tonight.
Okay. Counselor Winslow, did you have a question before Counselor Seega introduces the paper?
A question on paper four fourteen and four fifteen, so if Counselor Seega can-
Okay, let me have Counselor Seega introduce the committee report.
Oh, sorry, did your light not go on?
No, it's on.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm confused, we're getting ready to vote on these, so if he has a question, it needs to be said before I have a conversation. Okay, that's fine, Counselor Winslow, you have the floor.
No, I just-
You could give the committee report, and in your committee report, you'll be explaining why that's conditional.
Oh, okay.
You haven't given it.
Yeah, I just want to understand what the conditions are, that's, that's all.
Okay, so the license committee met this evening, we discussed all of these petitions, the majority of them renewals, with our compliance guys. The compliance guys, when these class two dealers and such come in for renewal, they go out, they check, make sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to. When they went to Prestige, they were over quite a bit a number of cars, so we decided that we were going to conditionally approve that license where it's the end of the year and compliance is going to do weekly, bi-weekly checks of the property to make sure that, you know, they were notified yesterday that they were over and they will be fined for being over. So they are now going, we're going to conditionally approve it and have compliance just do weekly or bi-weekly checks. We didn't specify when they were going to go, but they were just going to keep a little extra eye on that particular license, so we just put the wording conditionally for now to make sure that he's doing what he needs to do over there at six hundred Broadway. Okay, thank you.
And was, this was the location where they kind of overlapped in, in the licensing procedure, so it's a little bit-
Yeah, he, there's actually two different parcels of land, yes. So one is at six hundred, one is at five ninety. So he has two separate licenses for the same business because they're side by side and it's, looks like one big lot, but yes.
Right, so and then, and then in la, in the last round, we, they had to submit the updated plot plans.
Yep.
And so, great, well, thanks for the-
No worries.
Committee for doing that, I support, support that.
Perfect.
I just get great that, thank you very much.
Perfect, thank you. So the license committee voted to renew these petitions unanimously, favorably, so I make a motion to grant all of these petitions.
With the exception of the last two that were tabled.
She didn't call them yet.
I didn't.
Understood, okay. Sorry.
No, no problem, so on the motion by Counselor Seega, seconded by Counselor Taylor, clerk will please call the roll. Oh, sorry, Counselor O'Malley.
If I, if I want to vote no on those two, how do I do that?
On what two?
The two that you just talked about, procedure.
Five ninety and six hundred Broadway.
Can we just take those up separately then? Just those two?
Yeah, we can vote separately for those.
So everything else will be the same except for these-
Counselor O'Malley, just really quickly before you vote no on those, every single class two dealer in the city do not comply with the amount of numbers that they're supposed to have. Everyone is always over. So if you're going to vote no to renew this one, you should probably vote no to renew all of them, because none of them comply with the ordinance that we have in place.
I can't, I can't speak to that, I, but-
It's, it's fine.
Thank you.
But, yeah, we can do it separate.
Okay, so we're going to vote on four fourteen dash twenty-five and four fifteen dash twenty-five?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, taking up just papers four fourteen and four fifteen. Counselor Condon. This is a motion to grant according to conditions as expressed by the license committee.
Yes.
On those two papers alone. Counselor Condon.
Understood.
Yes. Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
No.
Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counselor President Linehan.
Yes.
Okay, so that is a nine to one vote that those two have been granted, and now it's okay with everybody if we take up one enroll call vote for all the remaining license petitions?
That's fine with me.
Okay. Counselor Condon?
Yes.
Counselor Crowe?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley?
Yes.
Counselor Seega?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Counsel President Linehan?
Yes.
Okay, so those are all granted by ten to zero vote.
Okay, next order of business.
Paper 4, oh, should we call Counsel...
Oh, we should, yes, can somebody, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa. The next, yep, the next order of business is Paper 458-25, order the City Council will vote whether to go into executive...
No, no, no.
What did I miss?
Did we do the livery?
I didn't talk about them.
We tabled them in committee so that we didn't present them tonight.
That's right, sorry.
Because they're still in your committee.
I apologize. In my mind, I was thinking we still had to talk about it tonight.
Oh, okay. We didn't take it up.
So I apologize.
Do we need to go to table them, though?
Well, no, they were tabled in committee, so I just announced that even though they're on the agenda, you weren't presenting on them tonight, because license hasn't released them.
You did that earlier.
Never made it to the floor, it never made it to the floor.
I didn't hear it.
They remain on the floor.
Okay, never made it to the floor, okay.
They never made it to the floor, that's, thank you, Counsel, that's right. So we get to move on.
I was still thinking we had to talk about it.
Okay. Paper 458-25, order the City Council will vote whether to go into executive session with legal counsel in accordance with Exemption 1 Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A1, and Exemption 7 Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law specifically to comply with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 23B, to act on the pending open meeting law complaint filed by Jaden Seega of 12 Cleveland Street on November 19th, 2025, against the City Council related to alleged serial deliberation regarding Paper 432-25, the appointment of Jeffrey Donahue to the Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational Technical School Committee on November 18th, 2025, with such discussion in open meeting may have detrimental effect on the litigation position of the city. Okay, so now we can just take a motion on whether or not we're going to approve the order.
Okay. Okay, so unlike our usual process, this is a slightly different exemption under the laws, the clerk just read, so at this time, I would be accepting a motion to either enter or not enter executive committee.
Motion to not enter.
Okay, so I have a second to stay, I prefer positive motion, so a motion to entertain this on the floor.
So the motion would be whether or not you're going into executive session, so the motion would be to adopt the order, and if you don't want to go into executive session, you would vote no.
Okay.
The motion is to adopt, it has to be a positive.
Okay, can you state that one more time? The motion is to adopt the order, and a yes vote or a no vote is what?
A yes vote is to go into executive session, and a no vote is to not go into executive session.
Okay, everybody clear?
If the vote is no, then the paper will be discussed on the floor.
Okay.
So, yes, Counselor O'Malley, one second, let me put your light on.
So I think that the way you would want to word it, so everyone understands, is you would move to adopt the order, hoping the same shall fail, because you want it to fail. It's a say, it's a positive motion, you're moving to adopt the order, but you're hoping it fails, right? Because that's what you want to do?
Yes.
Because the order is to go into executive session.
It's the same motion, it just clarifies that you're not in support of the motion.
Yep, I think that's...
That's fine, thank you.
So a, a no vote keeps it on the floor, in a nutshell?
A yes vote takes us out back, a no vote keeps us here on the floor.
Okay.
Okay, Counselor Cologne Hayes?
No.
No. Counselor Condon?
No.
No. Counselor Crowe?
No.
No. Counselor McDonald?
No.
No. Counselor O'Malley?
No.
Counselor Seega?
No.
No. Counselor Simonelli?
No.
No. Counselor Spatafora?
No.
No. Counselor Taylor?
No.
No. Counsel President Linehan?
No.
No. Okay, so that motion fails, um, by a vote of zero to 11, so we will open up discussion on the floor.
Okay, I'm gonna go to Counselor Seega. I want to remind folks to please keep a level of decorum as much as we can, I really don't want to have to cut lights off, I know this is a sensitive topic, I know that everybody wants to have a fair chance to speak on the paper, um, and I'm gonna turn it over to Counselor Seega, but just please keep that in mind.
Do you not read the open meeting law violation? I do have it open, did you want me to read it into the record?
I thought we have in the back.
Okay, so I do have it in front of me.
If you don't mind.
The open meeting law strictly prohibits serial deliberation, that is, a series of private, non-public communications among members of a public body that taken together involve a quorum and constitute deliberation outside of a posted public meeting. Based on information available to me, these are the words of Counsel Seega, um, Counselor Hayes has engaged in private communications with at least five other members of the Malden City Council representing a quorum for the purpose of influencing or shaping the council's deliberations on Paper 432-25 regarding the appointment of Jeffrey Donahue presently before us. These communications reportedly occurred via text message, email, and/or phone calls, and were explicitly related to strategy, positions, and intended outcomes regarding the agenda item from last night. Such serial private communications violate MGL Chapter 30A, subsection 18, which requires deliberations to occur in an open and publicly accessible meeting, and the Attorney General's guidance prohibits quote "daisy chain" or quote "hub-and-spoke" communications that collectively involve a quorum. While publicly advocating transparency, these private discussions directly undermine the public's right to observe the deliberative process. The integrity of tonight's proceedings is compromised when members participate in off-record deliberation intended to influence the outcome of a public vote. And then it goes further to say actions, um, wish to be seen is to preserve the integrity of this process to ensure compliance with the open meeting law, I respectfully request the following, that Counselor Hayes recuse herself from all participation, deliberation, and voting on this matter due to the serial deliberation described above, that the council take corrective actions including public acknowledgement of the violation and implementation of safeguards to prevent further serial deliberation or private lobbying among members, that this complaint be forwarded to the Attorney General's Division of Open Government for review as required by law, and that is Jaden Seega, November 19th, 2025.
Can I, before, before you speak, Counselor Seega, can I ask the clerk to explain procedurally what it is that we need to have as an outcome from this, because the, obviously, the public is not usually in executive session with us.
So what happens when an open meeting law is brought before the body, is they have to, um, acknowledge it, as you're doing tonight, at the next posted meeting of the full body, and then what happens now is the body will vote whether or not they want to answer this on their own accord, if they want to assign it to the legal department and have the legal department do an investigation and represent them when submitting the response to the Attorney General's office, or how you shall proceed at this point, so if you do vote to give it to the city solicitor's office, they'll do an investigation, they'll come back, they'll let us know what their findings are, and then they'll represent this body to the Attorney General's office.
Okay, and we do have a member of the legal department here tonight, just to lay that groundwork, so Counselor Seega, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. So, I believe rules should apply to everybody, and that is why I decided to put in this open meeting law violation, because last week, I think it was Monday evening, it was brought to my attention that Counselor Cologne Hayes was making phone calls regarding an agenda item that was on the docket for the following evening, um, and I, I wasn't really sure how many people she had gotten to until I started having a conversation with a few, so I just want to let everybody at home know, gonna go over a couple of things that Carolanne might have already said, but under the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, serial deliberation is strictly prohibited. Members of a public body may not hold a series of private communications that taken together involve a quorum discussing or influence public business outside of a posted meeting. In this matter, Counselor Cologne Hayes contacted multiple counselors privately. She made calls, text messages, and left voicemails specifically to influence deliberations. She stated in her own messages that she called, when she called Counselor Crowe and texted Counselor Taylor, she also texted Counselor Simonelli, that she called Counselor Linehan already, and she spoke with Counselor O'Malley. So if I do the math, that's six, that's a quorum of our 11. Each of these communications may have been conducted one by one, but collectively, they reached and involved a quorum of this full city council, which is the very definition of a serial deliberation under Mass. General Law. The content and purpose of these outreach efforts were clearly intended to shape opinions, coordinate positions, and influence last Tuesday night's deliberations on an agenda item before us, all of which must legally occur only during an open and public meeting. The law is clear, when a counselor connects multiple members through a chain of private calls, texts, and conversations, and the topic matter, the topic is the matter before this body, it becomes an unlawful private deliberation by a quorum. These private contacts undermine transparency, violate the public's trust, and compromise the integrity of our decision-making process. Because of these communications and the fact they were initiated for the purpose of impacting deliberations, this constitutes a clear violation of the open meeting law's prohibition on serial deliberation. To protect, protect what remains of the integrity of this process, Counselor Cologne Hayes should be recusing herself from all further discussion and actions on this particular agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Seega, um, thank you also for keeping your remarks relatively brief. I'm gonna go to Counselor Cologne Hayes next, and then I'm gonna take the lights that are in the queue from there. Counselor Cologne Hayes, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. So, I'm not going to get into the details, but I, I definitely would like this refer to our, um, city solicitor's office. The law is the law, um, like was just read, I do not believe at all that I had, I, that I went over a quorum, and you'll find that when we actually go through, um, an investigation, so I'm really looking forward to doing that, and referring it out, um, to the city solicitor's office so we can, um, get a resolution to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor McDonald, you're next.
I just wanted to make the motion to refer this to the legal department for an investigation review, which is what we do with every single one of the open meeting law complaint violation, you know, complaints that we receive, which we receive our fair share, maybe more. Um, and I, and I, and I say that, you know, basically recognizing that I, I don't really think more discussion at this table is fruitful at this stage from my perspective, we have to let them do that anyways, so, that's my motion.
Okay, thank you. We do have a motion and a second on the floor, I have, uh, two more lights, and I'm gonna go to Counselor Winslow, and then I'll take Counselor Taylor.
Yeah, I, I do support the motion to refer this for, um, rev, you know, investigation by legal, I know the circumstance, I've, I was in, um, it came up related to when I was, uh, you know, elected by you all to be council president, there was a similar di- dynamic in a political situation, so the legal office did a very thorough investigation, and, um, the result of that was accepted by the Attorney General, so I, and I think that's the way to go, thank you, great.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Winslow. Counselor Taylor?
Um, I just, I'm, I'm curious, I know we've talked a lot up here, I've asked several times that we have some sort of standards that allow us to know when we're breaking open meeting law, and, you know, I would almost, I was curious if, um, Counselor Seega was requesting that this go to our legal office or straight to the Attorney General, and if there's a difference there, um, and what that difference might be.
Can you state that again, I'm so sorry?
Sorry, whether or not this should go to our legal office or straight to the Attorney General's, because what I thought, I heard, was that she wanted it sent to the state and just kind of taken out of the city level altogether.
So, thank you for that, Counselor Taylor, because it's, I'm actually sitting up here and I'm kind of a little bit baffled, because normally when we go into executive session, we have a lot more discussion than we just did on this floor, instead of just handing it over to the legal department. I feel like, that's usually the last resort, is handing, handing it over to the legal department, so I'm, I'm not quite sure why everyone's looking to stifle debate up here this evening on this topic. Normally, we have a little bit of, more of a robust conversation on what the open meeting law violation is, and tonight, I'm just hearing, okay, I just want to refer it, which seems crazy to me, because it's gonna be weeks before we hear about this again, and I, I would like to have a conversation about it on the floor this evening. I have the proof that she did, um, I'm not just up here accusing somebody with baseless accusations, I actually have voicemails, text messages, hardcore, black and white proof that Counselor Cologne Hayes violated. I don't even know if we need to refer it to the legal department, to be quite honest with what I have, um, so, does that answer your question? I...
Sorry, um, Counselor Taylor, there you go.
I guess then, the question was if we were discussing it on the floor, should we continue to discuss it on the floor, and if we have this evidence, like, should it be brought forth, is that...
So my underst, and we can have our representative from our solicitor's office come up and speak to that if folks want to hear from him, but my understanding is that when we refer to legal, there's essentially research done into the specifics of what did occur, which would utilize the documents that Counselor Seega is referring to, and that that report typically comes back to us, we could then take that discussion and go and have another docketed executive session that we could then vote to take in behind closed doors or on the floor. I think when we've done that, always behind the scenes, it's probably just we're not remembering that we come back and forth a few times, because we're not, I, in my opinion, we are not accustomed to doing these on the floor, we haven't done this for a while, so, I don't know, if you want to come up and speak to that, that's my sense of how, would you mind coming up and speaking at the podium? I think that that's how that would proceed, is essentially, we would be asking the legal team, I have too many mics on, and we're reverberating, um, but that's how that would proceed, is that accurate?
Uh, yeah, our recommendation is to refer to our office, and, and we can come back and discuss again, whether it be an executive session or otherwise, but...
Can I ask a question to...
I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. Okay.
Sorry, Counselor Seega, you, you can absolutely respond.
Thank you. Uh, really quick, can you remind me again, it's been a while since we've had an open meeting law, um, how long it, it's gonna take for you to conduct this investigation? How long do you have? Do you know?
Um, yeah, I don't know if there's a, I don't know if there's like a market rate timeline on it, we'll be slowed down by the holiday this week, but, um, you know, I mean, you're all very accessible to us every time we call.
Is it 14, is it 30? It's, I don't think it's more than 30 days that we're supposed to respond to this, but I, again, I, I, I'm fine with referring it over to the legal team, but I'm just, I, we usually deliberate on it a little bit more than we're deliberating on it this evening, which is, I, I'm a little, I'm a little, I don't, I don't know, I, I feel like I would like a little more deliberation on this topic before we hand it over to the legal department for further research. Are we, are we not allowed to deliberate it this evening?
Well, I would, I wouldn't say that you're not allowed, but we're not going to come to a conclusion on it tonight.
No, and I don't expect to come to a conclusion, but I'm just wondering, am I the only one that knows that there was a serial deliberation going on in, at this...
Well, Counselor Seega, I don't think we're stifling debate, I have one light on, Counselor O'Malley, that I would like to get to, I think every counselor that would like to speak to this has had a chance, and ac, actually, now seeing Counselor Simonelli would also like to speak to it, but I, I'm, what I'm hearing, and we do have a motion on the floor that I want to take the vote on, um, as soon as we can, out of respect for those that made the motion, and the second, is that we want to refer to legal, have some professional research done, and then come back. I think we have ample opportunity to continue to debate, there's, nobody's ability to speak to this is being limited. I'm sorry, did you have anything else that you wanted to add? I wasn't trying to shut you down at all.
No, no, I, I think it's just, you know, the business of our department is to, you know, just not rush a decision tonight, just to have it referred to us, make sure that we're being fair to everyone involved, um, but, you know, again, if, if you're gonna discuss more, you're gonna discuss, but, you know, we're, we're just not going to get to a conclusion tonight, either way, so our...
Understood.
Our recommendation is to refer.
Really quickly. Okay, and then I really do need to move on to Counselor O'Malley, he's been waiting.
And that is fine, I'm not looking for a decision this evening, I'm just looking for a little bit more deliberation, we are never tongue-tied up here, and tonight, we happen to be tongue-tied with this particular topic, and I'm a little blown away by it, but, um, I, I would like to have a little bit more discussion about this, I'm not looking for a decision, if we have a little discussion, and then we hand it over to the legal team to do their research, and I can hand them over whatever I have, and if anybody else up here was contacted, or has anything that they can add to their research, that would be great, but I, I do think there should be a little bit more of a discussion on this, because if not, we have 14 business days, so we're gonna wait 14 business days to come back and have this discussion again, when this is something that just happened a week ago, I, I would rather get it all out tonight, so, thank you.
Understood, and I, just, Counselor O'Malley, before we take your, I, I just want, like, from the chair, I think what I would hope to have as an outcome, too, is for everybody to have an understanding of not just what the serial communication description is that was in the complaint, but I'm almost wondering if some, one of the reasons that folks aren't asking more is that we're not under, we, we want to make sure that we understand exactly what it is that we need to not do in the future, I think that when we've had similar situations like this in the past, having that be a clear outcome, that whether that's a training, or just really clearly stating in the response from the legal department that what we need to not, what we all need to know not to do, I think that's probably, you know, I'll speak for myself and say, you know, like, Counselor Winslow spoke to the, the complaint that we had in the past when he was elected council president, that was a moment, I think, where a lot of us had to digest kind of like what you do and where that line is.
Yeah.
Um, so I think that that's probably some of what's going on here, speaking again just from my own personal self.
Yeah, and, I mean, we can ab, absolutely, you know, revisit this, whether it's an open complaint or not, we can talk about the open meeting law, talk about, you know, what can and cannot be discussed, when and where, um, but, you know, as far as where we're at tonight, you know, and if you wanted to deliberate a bit, I, you know, I believe that you could, but if you would rather refer to our department, that is ultimately our recommendation, and we can always come back, we can come back, we can talk more, um, you know, and we'll know, I believe that you could, but if you would rather refer to our department, that is ultimately our recommendation, and we can always come back. We can come back and talk more, you know, and we'll have a better idea of what we've got going on here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you for your patience, Counselor O'Malley. You have the floor.
To Counselor Taylor's point, I believe that the process is, it automatically goes to the state, so I believe it already is with the Attorney General. And regardless of what we do, they're going to do their review. It does a lot have to do with what Counselor Seeca would like to see after this, but the council responds however the council responds. If the legal department is doing it, they have to come back to us with their, what they want to say, and we have to approve of that. So we will talk about this again. I think that that's probably why.
Thank you for that, Counselor O'Malley. Okay, Counselor Crowe?
I think Counselor Simonelli was ahead of me, and...
Okay. Counselor Simonelli, you can go ahead and unmute.
Well, I'm already unmuted. You should know me by now, Madam President. But, can you hear me?
Yes.
You can? You don't sound so excited. Listen, I want to just say this, that these are serious accusations, and I think it behooves us not to say anything at this moment, because it's going to be referred to the Attorney General's office and the city solicitor's office, so that they can do their investigation, and obviously, you know, if the evidence is, is there, they'll find it, and then we'll have ample enough time to debate on what to do about it, if we have any say over it at all, once it hits the Attorney General's office. I'm not too clear on, you know, what happens at that point, but, you know, there's a due process for everything. And, you know, this is a very difficult thing for me and for the neighborhood that I come from, because, you know, I don't like to, I, I, I just don't like to see people in trouble, and get people in trouble, and, and capitalize on it. That's just not my style. However, I mean, the facts are the facts. I mean, I, you know, I, I can't dispute them. They are what they are. But again, I think it behooves all of us to really move with caution at this point in time, and let the city solicitor's office do their job, come out with their findings for us, whether it hits the Attorney General's office or not. I don't know if it's one or the other, or it could be both. I'm not too clear on that. Maybe the city solicitor can educate us a little bit more on that, but I think that, you know, my 14 years on the city council, I've never seen anything like this before. So, guys are something. So I was just going to say that I think we should really walk with caution at this point, and I think that, you know, when, when accusations are being made, whether they're, whether they're firm or not, you know, there, there is a due process, and we all are city counselors, and I think that we should act accordingly. And, you know, and I've said this before, and I've said this in executive session, I'm going to say it again, we're one of 11. We should be helping each other out here. We should be working with one another. We should be moving the city forward in the direction that it should be going, that the mayor's office would like to see it going, because we elected him, so we should be working alongside him. We've got, we've got Proposition Two and a Half overrides, some councils want to add another $100 million deficit on top of it. We've got some serious issues that need some serious answers, and we're going to sit up here and, you know, go back and forth with one another. I just, I just don't, I just, I, I, I'm bewildered. So anyway, I just look at, again, you know, and Counselor Seeca, look at it, she's, she's got the evidence, and, you know, and she's doing the right thing as far as taking action on it. I'm not going to say she's not. She is. But again, I would just advise this council, not being an attorney, just being a street smart kid, to walk with caution on this, especially when you're accusing somebody of accusations. I think it would be best for all of us, if we do not deliberate tonight, and we give this to the city solicitor's office, so that they can come back to us and say, here's what it is, yes, it was a clear violation of the open meeting law, no, it wasn't a clear violation of the open law, or it's on shaky grounds, and advise us. That's what they get paid for. That's what we put them in office for. I'm not an attorney, so I would like to have the advice of the attorney before I stick my big foot and my big mouth and get myself in trouble for saying the wrong thing. And I think that's why you have awkward silence up there right now, because people are feeling the same way I'm feeling, they're just not saying it yet. So I think it would be best, once again, and I'll say it for the last time, give it to the city solicitor's office and let them report back to us. I don't, I don't mind waiting 14 days. I don't mind waiting until after the holidays. Difference is, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Simonelli. Counselor Crowe?
I'll just be really brief. I do agree with sending it to the city solicitor's office, and I think the lack of deliberation is because it pulls in a different person that's not part of this body, that is a Malden resident, that we don't want to be debating that or the nature of the texts or calls. So I think, you know, that's a little concerning to me to start bringing in someone else that is beyond this body. So I think that's why I wouldn't deliberate that, because I wouldn't want anything to, to, to be said, to be implied, to be, you know, about somebody else that is not part of the body.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Crowe. And I, I want to actually echo that point, because I think coming in tonight, that was one of my, probably the thing I was most worried about, just because it does involve an appointment. That was, you know, it really is actually not appropriate for us to be deliberating the appointment, and I think that was the thing I was most worried about, trying to keep on track, and I actually really want to thank everybody for kind of not going there, because it would have been out of bounds, and, you know, I'm glad that we didn't, we didn't do that. Counselor Seeca, one more time, can you be brief?
I'll try.
I really want to call the vote. Oh, well, now we have Counselor McDonald. All right, we're never getting out of here.
I'm, I'm sorry. I, I'll, I'll try to be brief, but this really has nothing to do with the appointment of Counselor, with former Counselor Jeff Donahue for the school committee position. This has to do with a violation of the open meeting law. It doesn't matter if this was another agenda item that we were discussing. I actually reached out to Jeff, I don't even know, the end of last week when I filed this, to ask him if he would mind if I read some of the text messages that I received or the voicemail that I had, because it does call him some not-so-nice-choice words, and he had no problem with me playing the recording or reading the text messages out loud. So I, again, if the, if we were in the back room in executive session, we would not have just handed it right over to the legal department. We would have had a conversation and had a, and talked about, you know, what had transpired, like, why are we here? If, if, if I have all the evidence here tonight, I don't understand why we can't discuss the evidence that I have and not have to waste the city solicitor's time to do an investigation, because I'm pretty confident what I have constitutes a quorum of this full, full city council. So I, I don't want to wait two weeks. I mean, if Counselor Spat, if Counselor Cologne Hayes ends up needing to recuse herself from this particular agenda item, the, the vote needs a representative. The city of Malden right now currently has no representative, and the longer we delay this, the longer we delay that, and the whole process that comes along with it. So I would really like to have a little bit more of a conversation here on this topic tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McDonald?
So, I made my motion yes, because I do not think it is appropriate for us to have that conversation before our own legal department can evaluate that evidence. If you've got the receipts, Counselor Seeca, it'll be quick, and we'll be back here real soon. And I certainly haven't had a chance to review any evidence, nor do I think that would have been appropriate, because I think it should be sent to the legal department, which is what we do in all cases, because they have to prepare the written response that we submit. So I am just personally like, I, we spend a lot of time on our own open meeting law violations, gang, and it's a little bit bananas, and I would just like us to take the roll call vote, so that we can do the thing we have to do, and then we will come back here and reconvene to be able to discuss this, I'm sure, to our hearts' content. So could we please take the roll?
So I have a motion by Counselor McDonald. Who seconded?
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Counselor Cologne Hayes. Thank you. All right, clerk, will you please call the roll?
This is a motion to refer this matter to the legal department for further investigation. Counselor Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Condon?
Yes.
Counselor Crowe?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley? Counselor Seeca?
No.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora?
No.
Counselor Taylor? Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Counselor President Linehan?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion has passed by a nine to two vote.
Thank you. Okay, next order of business.
That clears the docket.
Okay, does anybody have personal privilege?
Yeah, I do.
Chris does.
Oh, okay, Counselor Simonelli, let's take you first.
All right, thank you very much. Now to get off this foolish thing. Listen, I just want to let everybody know that the holiday lights are being put up at Lincoln Commons as we speak, and I will be back next week to welcome you all down to Lincoln Commons for some hot chocolate, and maybe, just maybe, I can convince Santa Claus to come down and say hello to everybody. So we're just going to, we're waiting on him now. You know, he's very busy at the North Pole doing those letters. So I appreciate everybody tonight, and thank you very much for your cooperation, folks.
Thank you so much. Counselor O'Malley?
Thank you. So this past Sunday, Malden Arts held their first public art trolley tour. I want to thank Old Town Trolley of Malden for sponsoring the event. They were very lucky to sell out all of the seats on the trolley, and they made a point to go to every ward, so every ward in Malden has public art, and the trolley went and saw all of that great growing public art ecosystem of our community, and I just want to congratulate Malden Arts for their success there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Crowe?
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, Happy Thanksgiving, everybody, on Thursday, and the Bread of Life, again, will be hosting there, Don't Be Alone for Thanksgiving, at the Malden High School on Thursday, what time? At 12 o'clock. But they're also looking for Counselor Spatafora, and Maria Luis has been working on organizing deliveries, and they pack up over 1,000 meals for not just Maldonians, but people in surrounding communities, so always need more people to, to deliver those meals. Lots of hands, 1,300 meals? I said over 1,000. The, and so if you want to, if you have not signed up already, you can reach out to Maria Luis. Sorry, no, more people, it's easier. The, or you can come to Malden High School between 9:30 and 10:00 at the cafeteria to, to really help out, because it is really heartwarming, and it's, it is important to our community and surrounding communities. So thank you, Counselor Spatafora and Maria, for putting that together.
Thank you, Counselor Crowe. Counselor Winslow?
Yeah, we don't want to forget, on Thursday at 10 o'clock, Medford and Malden are playing over at the stadium for, in Medford there, so, so come out, go Malden. I do want to thank the Department of Public Works and the Maplewood Association for working together to get up the, the tree in Maplewood Square, which is up now, a nice tree that was donated by Fina Rinaldi of Emerald Street, and donation by Big C Welding to get the lights up. So we will be having kind of some caroling and a lighting ceremony on Friday, December 5th, at 5:00, and, you know, hot chocolate and candy canes and stuff like that, so encourage everybody to come out for that. Thanks, bye-bye.
Great, thank you. Counselor Cologne Hayes?
Yes, I just wanted to give a shout out to the Malden Warming Center. It's been a while since I was able to attend one of their trainings for a volunteer, and they did a phenomenal job. The room was packed. I'm really looking forward to being able to give my time and volunteer. Circumstance had it for the past couple of years that I wasn't able to do that, but that was the last training, so if you do, the website is maldenwarmingcenter.org. There are other ways that you can donate, and I think I might have heard it was the last training until they opened, so there might be another one, so check the website, but I just wanted to say thank you for that. It is a wonderful community to be a part of. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Condon?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to take this opportunity to wish all the people a happy Thanksgiving, along with the rest of the city of Malden, and be thankful for what you have. Thank you.
Amen to that. Well, from the chair, I just want to remind folks that on Saturday after Thanksgiving, we'll be lighting up the tree at Felsmere Pond, so come on down at dusk around 4:00 PM. Counselor Spatafora and I will be happy to host you there with some hot chocolate. Bring your furry friends and your whole family. We'll have music and treats, and a visit from Santa himself, so you don't want to miss it. Hope to see you there. And with that, does anybody have a motion to adjourn? Okay. Motion by Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor Condon. Actually, we lost Counselor Simonelli, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everyone.